We are streaming live, and so we are ready to start as soon as you are, Mr. Jensen.
All right, it is seven o'clock. I will call the Monday, October, Monday, October 10th, 2022, regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Doug Kuchko.
Here.
Diane Cozer.
Here.
Steve Bowman.
Here.
Phil Henkel.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Here.
Miriam Barbara.
Here.
Bert Richard.
Here.
Sarah Turner.
Here.
And Randy, can you tell us if a proper notice was given for this meeting?
Yes, please be advised that public notice of this meeting as required by Sections 19.84 and 65.90 of the Wisconsin statutes has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper, the Rice Lake Corner type, to the Oakley Leader, and to radio stations WJMC and WAQE indicating the date, time, and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than 24 hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. It does appear that a proper notice was given for this meeting. We are now at the appearance section of our meeting. Before we get into that, I want to remind everyone that based off a policy of the board, we have 30 minutes for appearances section. So to try and move this along and get as many people able to speak to us as possible, I am going to start by calling who is on, will be on deck. And then when you get up to the podium, announce yourself and who you are and where you're from. And then when you get done, I'll be speaking for the next person on deck, and we'll try to keep somebody at the podium as much as possible. So we're not waiting for you to come down the aisle to reach the podium. With that, I also want to remind everyone that as you're speaking to the board this evening, the community is also watching, and there are friends and family and loved ones that are out there watching as well. And so be respectful of everyone's personal lives and things along those lines. So we're careful with what we say and how we say it. Be respectful. And you also have three minutes. We have, Randy, is the clock going to be?
Yeah.
Up on the screen?
Yep.
So we will have a clock that will start once you have given your name and where you're from. The clock will start. You have three minutes to state what you want to state to the board. So as we're going through this, we'll start with Lori Broom. If you want to start working your way up, Lori. All right, we will move on. Armin Kifmeier. And then the next person up is Emily Bush. So if you want to come up and be ready to speak in the chair right behind the podium, that would be good. And with that, we will start with appearances. Welcome.
Hi there. My name is Armin Kifmeier. I'm a senior here at Rice Lake High School. And I've already spoken before the board about the specific changes to Policy 411 that will be extremely kind of negative for transgender students, but I want to try to explain it from a different angle. We are all assuredly aware of the trope that students don't want to be at school for most of the day. If you ask just about any student if they would rather be at school or at home, we could probably agree that most would choose home. But for many LGBT students, those whose parents are far from accepting, let alone supporting them, this trope is the exact opposite of what we would expect. They, while most students are giddy for that last spell of the day to ring so they can go home and play their video games, they're sitting there dreading the end of fifth period and worrying how they could possibly survive a whole night at home. They know that if they try to talk to their parents about their true identity, they will be verbally abused, possibly disowned, or even physically assaulted. And in the worst cases, their lives can be threatened, which we have seen in this, our community. So for those students, their schools is the closest thing they have to a welcoming home. Their friends are the closest things they have to a supporting siblings, and their teachers are the closest thing they have to loving parents. This policy change is a clear message to these students, the one that's proposed, of course. It tells them that the institution that they rely on to survive gives more care to whiny parents with baseless political and religious reasoning than their very lives and safety. It also means that the staff who want so dearly to support their students are disallowed from it and even forced to participate, or disallowed from helping them and even forced to participate in the deterioration of their mental health. It may feel that the reaction to this attempt to change the policy is blown out of proportion, and we're carrying too much. But it is a fact that this policy change will have extremely negative effects for many LGBT students in your school and even their staff in all of our community. I understand if liability is an issue to some, but I think you can agree that students' health and safety is much more important than liability. And we can always work together to change the policy in a way that can prevent liability of the school and still protect our students' safety. I just want to close with saying that at least, I think we have to table this for the time. We have not heard enough from teachers and students, and that's a problem because this is affecting the students and the teachers. And we need more time to work out meetings between the board and the GSA. And if we vote on this tonight, their voices will never be heard when their voices are the most important to this discussion. Thank you.
Elliot Kifmeier, you are on deck.
Okay. Okay, I'm Emily Bush. I went to Rice Lake High School for my entire, Rice Lake School District for my entire life, graduated here in 2018. I'm currently going to college, I'm getting my master's degree and my EDS degree in school psychology due to lack of mental health awareness in the schools that I grew up with. The National Education Association, the NEA, released a piece in 2016 titled "Legal Guidance on Transgender Student Rights." This well-researched guide lays out suggestions for schools to follow regarding gender diverse students based on legal battles and education-related law. In regards to the parental right to know, the NEA states administration and faculty should not disclose a student's gender identity or gender expression to others, including parents or guardians, unless the student makes a request to do so. There have been several court cases launched at schools who neglected to do this since the release of this guide that have resulted in the courts upholding the NEA's statements. Oftentimes, students who are beginning to understand their gender identity first come out to the people they trust or support them. Usually, this is someone such as a close friend, a family member, or a trusted school staff member. Over time, as society has gained a better understanding of gender identity, many gender diverse students have made the huge step to come out at school and to actively seek acceptance from their peers and their educators. This is despite the findings from the Trevor Project study that trans and non-binary students experience a higher rate of bullying than the rest of their LGBTQIA peers, and at a much higher rate than their non-genderconforming ones. At 61% of gender diverse students experience bullying in relation to their gender identity. If it is important enough to our students that they are knowingly putting themselves at risk of bullying, that they are brave enough to explore their identity at school but not at home, then there is clearly an issue between the student and their guardian, be that in communication, in trust, or in safety. Many parents do not understand why a student would want to keep their gender identity from their family. Odds are, though, these are not the family and the parents that the students are hiding from. In a research article by Biomed Central, it was found more than 59% of transgender youth initially faced a negative reaction from their parents. Following coming up to their parents, trans students received more severe verbal and physical abuse. Changing Policy 411 to require students to come out to their parents if they want to feel comfortable in school puts 59% of gender diverse students at risk. It is not the job of the school board to ensure parents are having an honest and open dialogue with their students. It is the job of the school board to keep our students safe. As someone who went here for my entire K through 12 schooling, I've heard firsthand how horribly coming up to their parents has gone for some of my transgender fluid peers. Many students are not able to find comfort at home and instead find comfort in school. Endless research shows that students learn best when they feel comfortable and safe in their environment. I am begging you to continue to let our students learn in comfort. Do not force them to choose between their optimal learning experience and safety in their homes. This should be an easy decision to make. It is well researched both in the legal and mental health fields. Listen to the research, listen to our students, listen to our teachers. Please make the right choice. Do not let people who have no experience in our schools, no recent experience, no students even in our classes. Thank you.
Richie Pimental, you're on deck. Elliot?
Hello, my name is Elliot Kifmeier. I graduated from Rice Lake High School in 2020. I am transgender. I came out in 2016, and I came out at school first, despite knowing my parents would be supportive. Coming out to family is a huge step for any LGBT person. I needed time and a comfortable space to be certain of who I was before taking that step. Science and medicine recognize that transgender people exist, and that not forcing people into the incorrect gender boxes is the correct practice. They recognize that forcefully preventing transition is harmful. If we are truly concerned for the safety of our youth, we should be focused on supporting transgender students rather than making parents more comfortable with ideas that go against our modern understanding of gender identity. School is for learning. We learn a lot, not only academically, but about ourselves. I've heard concern about people who detransition, and while I could get into how there are, how the numbers of people who actually do are very small, and the leading causes of detransition are actually things like lack of support and inability to get a job. I'll instead argue that keeping youth from experimenting and making mistakes with gender is actually more harmful for those who would detransition later. If there really is such a big number of people who are wrong about being transgender, let them learn early on in high school. Let them use a different name and pronouns. Why should we treat this any differently than nickname? My mom went by Fred growing up. My brother was called Kiffy. Some people go by middle names or names of relatives. If I think I want to be a doctor, but real-world experience is going to change my mind, I want to find out early on before I spend lots of time and money going to college for it. Making experimenting such a big deal and creating barriers like permission slips won't help the hypothetical large number of detransitioning youth. It will lead to people bottling these thoughts and questions up and possibly making larger mistakes at the first chance they get once they're old enough. And for the people who are transgender and not taken seriously, it leads to depression, anxiety, and suicide. Parents, you cannot force your children to be who you want them to be, and your attempts may cost their lives. It is not, if it is not, it will likely ruin your relationship with them. I have friends who have cut off all ties with family because of the harm done to them. I have cut off ties with much of my own extended family because they refuse to let go of their own harmful ideas. I did not teach myself to hate me for who I am. This very community and much of my own family did that. I learned it from much of the same things being repeated at these board meetings. It is the support I received from allies that helped me unlearn that. I would not be alive without the support. Do not take that away from my younger siblings.
Ella Orson, you're on deck. Ella? We'll see. Deck, in case she's not here, Ash Alrich.
Hello, I'm Richie. I'm a senior at Rice Lake High School, and I've been out as trans since I was 13. When I was 13 and I realized I was trans, I transferred to a different school in hopes of having a more fresh start. In my first week of being at this other school, I was outed to my parents and humiliated by the staff and students. I was reported to my parents every time I wrote my name on an assignment. I had to sit in the principal's office with my parents, the principal, and school social worker three times, formal meetings. These people in these meetings were, tell me that I, in some way, shape, or form, was not right to exist, that my identity was false. My own parents told me this, and I was horrified. I stopped coming to school. My grades dropped, and my relationship with my parents was so incredibly strained that it was hard to even go home at night. I decided that I couldn't take the cycle of sitting in the principal's office over and over again. I decided that it was just not good enough for me. I decided that I was going to take my own life the following month because the idea of being dead put me more at peace than the idea of people wishing and wanting me to be someone I wasn't. That was terrible. Nobody was willing to give thought to how truly isolated and alone I felt. My parents pushed me back to the Rice Lake Middle School when I turned 14 due to me begging. I don't think I've ever really told anyone how Rice Lake single-handedly saved my life. 411 kept me, and I'm many sure, and I'm sure many of my peers alive. I've never been more grateful for a group of teachers and students in my nearly, in my 18 years of living, because even the students and staff that don't understand have the decency to respect the various ways people choose to live their lives. But removing that policy strains the mental health for queer students, and more than I think a lot of people, especially our own parents, realize. I want to say that I'm fine now because of my environment and because of my age, having that control over my life. But taking away that policy is going to destroy this little sliver of hope that these queer kids, younger than me, are hanging on to by threads. I feel that they are going to be unwelcome by the staff and students that are meant to keep them safe in this district, and that is all, that is the most upsetting thing to all of us. That's all. Thank you.
Ella, are you here? Ella? All right, Ash, you're next. Heidi Wise, you're on deck.
Hello, I am Ash Alrich. I am a trans male. I have been in the Rice Lake District since kindergarten. I was in the Jefferson School since kindergarten, first grade, second grade, till fourth grade in Hilltop System, and then the middle school through high school. I am now a sophomore, and I have gone through the struggles of coming out. I was never fully accepted in my mental head, but my parents say that they have accepted me, but they never really showed it until later this year, actually, earlier this year. I've been using Ash for about two years. This will be my second year of, my second anniversary of my committing. I tried to overdose because of my home situation, and it's gotten a lot better, but it's also got into a place where it just sits kind of in the middle way sometimes. But it's a lot better than it was. And it's a very big struggle that people have. And earlier last week, I was doing a little bit of research about this topic that we're going through, and Madison University, University is going through the same struggle right now, but they got a pro bono lawsuit on the university's side to stop this from the community trying to control adults' lives to be trans or non-binary. And from the looks of it, that it might be going on their side, the universities, because the court says that they could still use their policy until further notice. And I actually have papers about it in my pocket, so if you ever want to see those, I have them. But the Madison University is fighting against other adults to allow the LGBTQ plus community of that university and other universities it is connected with to keep their policy of allowing the sign-gendered people to their right bathrooms and their right changing rooms and the right places to be, and the right sports, and the right places that they want to be in. And so you can't really stop a person coming out after you're 18 because you're no longer the legal guardian of that person. So maybe think about what's going on in the world and not just you. Thank you.
Paul Poppy, you're on deck. Paul? Josiah Moldenhauer. All right, you can go ahead.
Heidi Wise, Chautauqua, Wisconsin, mom to a high school student. What are we doing to our kids? Imagine this scene. A school staff member sees a student who had previously appeared healthy now looks frightfully thin. She invites the student into her office for a supportive conversation. Sally, you appear to have lost weight. Is everything okay? Sally begins to cry. You sound just like my parents. They crab about my weight and force me to eat. Nobody understands that I'm obese. I have to lose weight. I feel so much better when I don't eat. I thought I was safe here, but now I'm scared. My parents would kill me if they knew I was vomiting and not eating at school. The staff member is stunned, but pivots to affirm Sally. Sally, I apologize for assuming you're thin. Now that I know you identify as obese, I will help you starve yourself. I'm not at all like your parents, who sound intolerant and dangerous. You and your secret are safe with me. Even better, at this school, we love and support you with policies that require others to affirm and celebrate who you feel you are. We also offer the Anorexia Bulimia Coalition, or ABC, where you are affirmed with others who share your feelings, as well as special access to the bathroom so you can vomit without being judged. Just make sure you don't vape afterwards. That's bad for your health, and I will have to notify your parents. What are we doing to our kids? Two years ago, we literally advocated for children to block their breathing and take experimental shots that have greater health risks for kids than COVID because some said it was unsafe and unloving to do otherwise. That was wrong. Today, we are literally advocating to mutilate children and subject them to a lifetime of powerful drugs that cause infertility and other serious problems because some say it's unsafe and unloving to do otherwise. This is wrong. What are we doing to our kids? Constant affirmation is not love. Disagreement and discernment are not unsafe. Not all choices that feel and sound good are healthy and virtuous. Parents have the legal right and moral obligation to guide their children. It is also a terrible practice and a terrible lie to claim compassion for one group when it violates the rights of others. Parents matter. We love our kids. Vote yes on parental notification. Thank you.
Nellie Shear, Nellie? Nellie Shire? There she is. Okay, go ahead, Josiah.
Board, I actually was, after I was on the list for last week, or two weeks ago, I decided to yield my three minutes to Josh Carlson. Is that all right?
I don't know that we've got a policy. Follow the order of, we'll have to follow the orders. And I do see you are on a little bit later, so we'll see if we can get through everybody. All right, Nellie? On deck is Sam DiArman. Go ahead, Nellie.
Hi, Nellie Shire, Rice Lake. I was very disappointed by what I heard at the school board meeting last month. Abby didn't get her way, but instead of chalking it up to the fact that she holds certain views that are not popular with parents in this district, she took her figurative ball and went home. On her way out the door, she threw the school board and administration that has been nothing but gracious and kind to her under the bus. For good measure, and because she knew that weaponizing her identity would rile up her base, send the media to her defense and shut down any opposition to her behavior, she made sure to let everyone know she is a lesbian. Her feelings were hurt, and she felt unsafe. We all know you don't dare disagree or ask why she feels unsafe, or you'll be portrayed as a homophobe, a bigot, a puppy killer, or worse. I have no doubt there are personality conflicts between board members, but this was not an LGBT issue until she made it one. Nobody cares how she identifies or where she aligns, but she tried to make this about her instead of the parental notification issue, and that is despicable. Please don't allow her emotional manipulation sway you from making the decision to change this policy. I also need to reject the very loud and aggressive voices vilifying teachers, administrators, and school board members. I could be wrong, but as far as I know, I'm almost positive none of you are radical ideologues bent on indoctrinating our kids, nor are any of you willfully ignorant, hurtful, harmful, or taking action against LGBT QIA student, staff, and allies. Changing the parental notification of Policy 411 does not codify bullying, as Abby wrote in her parting comments. This is about parents having the right to be involved in deeply personal and important decisions regarding their children. And I don't care how much a teacher says they care about their kids. I'm 100% sure that is true, but they do not care about our kids more than the actual parents. What if a 14-year-old wanted to run off to North Carolina, get married, have a baby, because they're so in love and have always wanted a baby? That decision will have lasting implications that will permanently alter the course of their lives and will affect them emotionally, mentally, physically, economically, socially. But they've always wanted a baby, and you don't want them to threaten suicide, so eh. Abby's statement that by removing the sticker, we are explicitly telling our students and staff that this district is not safe nor supportive, is divisive, dishonest, and just not true. A sticker that is ideologically and politically charged has no place in a school. What if a teacher had a Let's Go Brandon sticker on their door? Would anybody have a problem with that? Stickers don't convey meaningful messages to our kids unless they are on a first-grade spelling test. Are the kids, are there kids who feel marginalized or bullied? I would guess that 100% of kids feel that way, and they will continue to feel that way as long as we continue to divide them by participating in the oppression Olympics using identity politics. We all have gay, lesbian family members and friends, and I don't know a single one of them that came out when they were under the age of 20, nor should they. We already know the trans community has an increased risk of suicidality both before and after transition, which that very knowledge should necessitate immediate parental notification. What if a student confides in a staff member and then commits suicide, and the parents had no idea anything was going on? That is playing with fire, and somebody is going to get burned. If there is a situation where a student fears for their safety at home, then we have far bigger issues than parents not agreeing with their lifestyle choices, and the proper authorities need to be involved. In its current form, this policy encourages kids with a high rate of suicidality to keep secrets, which blurs the lines and undermines parents. That is dangerous and wrong.
Time.
Please vote to allow.
Jerry Miller, you are on deck. Jerry Miller's on deck. Go ahead, Sam. Unfortunately, we've moved on.
Hello, my name is Sam DiArman. I am the Kids Ministry Director at World Harvest Church. And as I currently understand it, the proposed policy change is simply that parents must be informed if there is a name change at the school or using a different bathroom, rather than that they can. As someone who regularly interacts and communicates with parents about their children on behalf of an organization, I do not support the current policy and am in support of this change. While I understand that at this point in time, parents have been informed of all changes with students, the current policy allows for things to be hidden. It creates an opportunity for lies and distrust to be prevalent. No good policy starts with the ability to withhold information from a child's primary caregiver with a lie. I understand being concerned about a parent's reaction, and believe me, I understand that. But withholding information about a child from the child's parent or caregiver only creates more issues because a parent will find out. Whatever is hidden will come to light. Parents have to be informed of or grant permission for literally anything else. If we're so concerned with the safety of our kids, perhaps the school district could offer other resources for parents, such as class and counseling, rather than withholding information. To the transgender community and those in support of the current policy, I just want to say this is not an attack against you. Puberty in high school is so hard, and I cannot imagine feeling like you don't belong within your own body. Like, I can't imagine that. But you are beautifully and wonderfully made. Jesus loves you so much. John 3:16 said that, "For God so loved the world that he gave his one and only Son for you," so that you can be saved. Okay, and so I, so that you can be saved. In John 3:17 said that God did not send his Son into the world to condemn or judge the world, but the world might be saved through them, through him. So my prayer for you is that you will find the same safety and peace that I have found in Jesus. And if you want to come up to me and talk with me, I would love to talk with you and hear your story and pray with you afterwards. Thank you.
Eli Shoals, you're on deck. Eli is on deck. Go ahead, Jerry.
Hi, I'm Jerry Miller, back again. I have two students here in Rice Lake, fourth grade and second grade, so this is a big deal moving forward. As a parent, I find it hard, hard to read a former board member's statements written in the local newspaper. Quoted, "Proposed changes to Policy 411 Rule 2 will codify bullying in making transgender students have to choose between who they are and their parents' wishes." Furthermore, she encourages the board to drop the changes that would allow parental interference. Well, personally, there is not one person I will ever let interfere with the raising of my children. If there are parents who don't want to know what is going on or who their child is at school, why haven't we heard from one? That's because we all want to know what's going on and want, and know, and want to know who our children are. The idea that schools have to hide stuff from us, the parents, is flat-out wrong, and it is immoral. There are many things that need to change with some of the policies in this district. The parental consent notification can be a great start. It will give us parents the opportunity to confront something that may be downright terrifying at first and face them head-on, giving us the ability to stand by our children and open the door for us to contradict the current agenda being pushed by the adults in the LGBT community, and show our children the other side of the coin, and hope that they will make well-informed decisions about their lifestyle and medical bodily choices. As a member of this community and a parent that has two children in this district, I fully support this change and encourage you to commit to making a difference. A large portion of the community supports this as well. Look at all the people that are here for you. I ask you not to be intimidated by activists and others who only want what they want. We, as parents, are here because we want our district to be different than the current trend of abysmal school systems. And it starts with you reaffirming our rights as parents to be informed to be informed and be involved with our children's lives at home and at school. So today, you will have to be courageous and do what is right. Again, I ask you to vote this into policy. We are with you and we support you. Thank you.
Again, I'm going to ask the community to please, when people are talking, be respectful of one another. The people at the, they have signed up, and whether you agree or disagree with what they have to say, please be respectful and let them speak. With that, on deck is Steve McConkey. Yeah, if there's, if there's time, Steve. Eli?
Thank you. Eli Scholes, father of three, Rice Lake Area School District. Yeah. Many of the people listening tonight, as well as the, some members of the board, I don't think still fully understand what the trans cult really is. So tonight, I'm going to tell you the truth and try and clear it up for you. Giving a precious, developing child suppressive hormone therapy, puberty blockers, performing chemical castration, and surgical mutilations on children is evil. The adults who advocate for transgenderism are evil. Why don't you stand against an evil cult instead of placating them with a policy? By having a transgender policy, you are lending validity to an evil fiction. You don't fight evil with tolerance and understanding. Your policy should be telling kids the truth. There is no such thing as transgenderism. Sex and gender are not malleable. I hear a lot of talk about safe this and safe that. It's no wonder that children don't feel safe when you have a bunch of adults busy affirming that they can be a different gender, which is a complete lie and a complete physiological impossibility. I can't believe that we must listen to board members use phrases like, "When a child is transitioning." Do you really believe what you are saying? I can't believe we have to come down here and tell a bunch of people with master's degrees in educating children that it's, that it's incredibly irresponsible and damaging to tell a young man that he may actually be a woman. You have to understand that these people actually believe they can change their gender based on how they feel. You are dealing with people who are severely mentally and emotionally compromised. These political activists are clinically insane, and you can't let the crazies run the asylum. Your policy should be telling children that it doesn't matter how many hormones you take or how many surgical mutilations you have, every cell in your body will always be male or always be female. You can't change your gender regardless of how you feel. Your feelings don't get to change biological science or the English language. What's next? Is there going to be a policy that validates children who think they're animals? It's amazing how the left completely misses the point. So just to be clear, no one is attacking people's personal sexual preferences. Those are private matters between the child and their parents and have no place being facilitated in the school district. Gender identity is a completely different matter. You can't erase gender. Gender is not a choice. It is not assigned. It is a biological, scientific fact. The district must refuse to acknowledge or comply with the lie of transgenderism or live with the fact that you've allowed an evil concept to flourish. Thank you.
Steve, I'm sorry, but we are out of time.
Can you just let me speak a little bit?
I'm sorry, we are out of time.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. All right. Next, we will, I would entertain a motion to approve our regular session meeting minutes from Monday, September 26th.
I'll motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have our monthly budget report, our board bills. We have two employment resignations and four employment recommendations. We're going to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I think we have six.
Oh, I stand corrected. Thank you. We do have six. There's two more on the next page.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the consent agenda has been approved. Next on the agenda, we get into our reports section. We'll start off with Hoggan Elementary School visit to the conservancy. Mr. Belcheck.
So this is definitely a little different format here, trying to present from down here versus what I'm used to. I don't know how many people are aware of the conservancy that the district now has in place. It's a little bit northwest of town here. We have a lot of staff. Actually, all of our staff were able to go out there and visit the conservancy this year as part of our Back to School Inservice Day. And so the district has really tried to invest some, some funds into allowing students to get out there as well throughout the course of the year with the goal of trying to get every student, I believe K-8, out to the conservancy at some point throughout the course of the school year. Those of us out at Hoggan, we're fortunate that we can load a lot of students on one bus and get a lot of our, our building out there at one time. And so last week, I think it was last week, maybe it's two weeks ago at this point, we actually took our entire building out to the conservancy, and we had our teachers actually take a lot of their lesson plans that they've been using and some of the standards that they've been teaching, and they were actually give this, able to give the students some hands-on experience out at the conservancy. And so we wanted to share a little bit on what we did at each grade level. So kindergarten, they're really into the nature exploration right now and a lot of hands-on discovery. Out at the conservancy, they have what they're calling, it's like an outdoor kitchen, and so they've got some supplies out there where students can, and you can kind of see the pots and pans, the spatula, things like that. They can kind of dig through different pieces and find different rocks and plants and all kinds of organisms and stuff like that at the kitchen out there. And it's also the perfect time because they also study seasonal changes, and you're going to see that become kind of a theme through a lot of this right now. And so they were looking at the changing of the leaves and how different things are starting to decompose and whatnot during the fall. Going on to first grade, they did a little scavenger hunt when they were out there. They had a checkbox for all the different animals and the different plants that we would see. They were looking for a variety of, of leaves and different flowers that they could find and trying to collect some of those items. When they walked off of the conservancy that day, each of the first grade students had a little Ziploc bag that they were able to take home and share with their, their parents, what they were able to learn that day out at the conservancy. So, second grade. Fortunately, I was able to tool around with them a little bit while we were out there. And so the second grade, they were really talking about the leaves changing. And at one point, the teacher, Mrs. Anderson, was like, "Hey, can anybody tell Mr. Belcheck why the leaves are changing color right now?" And I was like, "Holy cow, I don't know why the leaves are changing color." And so the student was like, "It's because the chlorophyll is leaving the leaf." And I'm like, "Wow, that's amazing that they even know what chlorophyll is." And so, you know, they were able to take what they're learning in the classroom, out to the school conservancy, and really start to apply it. Students were finding pine cones out there, which really led to a lot of the tree identification. They were looking at some of the tree bark, the tree leaves, and working through the tree identification. And then insects, they've been talking a lot about insects as well in second grade, and so they're finding a lot of different insects that they could start to kind of explore around. Third grade, I thought this one was super cool. Mr. Jerusale, he was showing the students how they could make a whistle out of an acorn in case they were lost out there. They could take, he actually got it working, which was kind of cool, and I never knew that you could do such a thing. So that was really neat. And again, they were looking at tree and leaf identification and the changing of the seasons. You know, we were a little bit early for the changing of the colors, but you could just start to see that happening. And then he had a quote that he wanted to share with us. "Love the trees until their leaves fall off, then encourage them to try again next year to grow." So just kind of a neat little quote. Our fourth grade then, so Mr. Brown, I was a little bit nervous when he was saying they were going out there to find mushrooms. You know, and so they were looking for edible and non-edible. I was reassured that they didn't actually try any of them, so I was thankful for that. They were looking for the different characteristics, though, of how you can try to identify the edible versus the non-edible, as well as the habitat, the habitat where they grow. And if you've been out to the conservancy, like, there are mushrooms all over the place, and especially in the fall of the year right now. They are growing on the ground, they're growing from trees all over the place, and so it's really a great day for them. They found just a ton of them out there. So kind of scooting on. We also had, and so after the entire school went out there, Carla Grenier wanted to take a couple of grades out there where their art time was back-to-back, and she had some art lessons that she wanted to use with them out there. And, you know, I don't know if you've done where you put the leaf underneath a sheet of paper and then you rub the crayon over it. You know, she was doing that with them out there. But then she really went into, you know, they wanted to explore some of the studio skills while they're out there, and then recognizing and demonstrating the relationships between art and design, and then learning within other disciplines. So a lot of the science that, that goes into that as well. And then these were just a couple of quotes that came up. When the art students were out there, one of the fourth grade students said, "This is my beautiful heaven." When they got off the bus, they saw, you know, just the nature out there, and they're like, "Hey, this is super cool." William Wordsworth has said, "Let nature be your teacher." And I think the staff out at Hoggan have really embraced this. We're also fortunate right at Hoggan. We've got a lot of space in the back. I know Mrs. Thornsley in kindergarten, she takes kids out back a lot just to explore some of the stuff that we have there. I thought this next quote was really cool, too. Children cannot bounce off the walls if we take away the walls. You know, a lot of times we're like, "Oh, kids are just going stir-crazy, they're bouncing off the walls." Well, you don't have the walls there. They're going to go explore, burn off some energy, come back and learn. The next one there, "Anything you teach in an indoor classroom can be taught outdoors, often in ways that are more enjoyable for children." We talk a lot about engagement. This is another great resource for us as a district to really engage students in their learning, whether it's science, art. I know we've got language art stuff going on out there. We've got the building that's going to be built out there, and I think that's going to be a fantastic place for students to go. And then this last one, we had a fourth grade art student that same day then, as they were getting off, that said, "You know, when we first walked out here, it looks like a magical fairyland." And there was probably still a little bit of frost on the ground when they got out there. They went out in the morning, and so you had the sparkly frost and all that kind of stuff. You know, so I know from our staff and our students at Hoggan, I just wanted to say thank you to the board for investing in the conservancy out there. Rod Olson, who donated the property to the school board, obviously thank you to them. It truly is a spectacular resource for us as a school district. So, thank you.
Thank you for being a part of implementing our goal of having that used, and this is a great update and makes me feel good that it was used and appreciated and effective. So thank you very much.
Definitely. Next on the agenda, we have a proclamation. The state of Wisconsin, the Department of Public Instruction, has a proclamation, "Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation effectively for 76 years through advanced practices in nutrition education, and whereas more than 2,400 public and private schools in Wisconsin participate in the National School Lunch Program and served at least 84,920,953 meals during the 21-22 school year, and whereas recent research shows students are receiving their healthiest meals at school, and there is evidence of continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. And whereas the success of this effort is due largely to resourceful, creative, local food service administrators, managers, and staff workers working in cooperation with parents, families, teachers, community groups, government personnel, and students. Therefore, be it resolved that I, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, she declared October 10th through the 14th, 2022 National School Lunch Week, a time to celebrate the importance of program helping keep students nourished so that they can learn." So October 10th through the 14th is proclaimed to be National School Lunch Week. And with that, I would entertain a motion to proclaim that.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion has been made and seconded.
All right. It has been proclaimed that October 10th through the 14th is National School Lunch Week. Next on the agenda, we have our Finance Committee meeting update. Mr. Bowman?
We met on October 6th. All members were present. Proper notice was given. We approved the minutes. Our first issue was the, the issue of mailing checks after review by the Director of Finance. So sometimes in the, in the past, we have waited until this meeting before they could send the checks out. We did review the Policy 673, and it, it does not specifically say that they cannot pay the bills. I mean, they can pay the bill, it specifically says they can pay the bills on a timely matter. It does not say that they need to be pre-approved by the board. So we still need to approve the bills, but we are allowing the Director of Finance, in alignment with our policy, to pay the bills on a weekly basis versus monthly. We then approved the tax levy and the budget. We, we gave an initial review of that. Our next meeting in October will be our budget meeting, so we are going to get back together October 20th to see kind of the summary, financial summary for the next year. And so that is our next meeting date. We did look at the bills and recommend approval of those, and we adjourned. So our next meeting will be Thursday, October 20th, before a budget hearing, which is in later October.
Any questions of the Finance Committee? Seeing no questions, thank you for that update. Next, we have the Calendar Committee meeting update. Mr. Drost?
Yeah. So the Calendar Committee met last Thursday, and just as a reminder, that's composed of people and representatives from all three grade levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and Mr. Bowman was there as well. Typically, we develop two one-year calendars, so this would have been our year to develop the 23, 24, and 24, 25 calendars and bring those to you as a board. We feel really good about what we have drafted for the 23, 24 calendar. We are going to investigate, potentially seeking a waiver for the 24, 25 calendar. I need to look into that process more. Just because the, the school year in 24, 25, we wouldn't be able to start on not being able to start until September 1st. We wouldn't be able to start until September 3rd, just the way the calendar falls. And so we want to, that would really be a year where it would maybe make sense to start that last week in August. Not sure we can seek a wa, I'm not sure we will be granted a waiver, but we're going to look into that. But if nothing else, I think we're really close to bringing a draft 23, 24 calendar to the board. I think we would probably see that at the next meeting while we wait for a little more feedback on the 24, 25 calendar.
Any questions from the board?
I would like to add that I appreciate a board member being involved. We've always had a good relationship in regards to that committee, and I thought it worked very well, and thank you for organizing that meeting, and I appreciate you allowing me to be a part of it. I thought it worked very well.
Thank you. Next, the Policy and Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting update. We've got the second reading of Policy 347.2, Policy 411 Rule 1, Rule 2, Exhibit 1, Exhibit 2, and Exhibit 3. And for the board, I just want to make sure that there's a clear understanding, Policy 411. There's a lot of things being said about that policy. Policy 411, as it stands, is not changing. It is the addition of the Exhibit 3 and Rule 2, and that is, at some point, when the student is ready to go with a name change in the school district, that the parents have to be involved with that. Prior to that, our students can reach out to staff members, talk to staff members, and those students do not, have, do not have to be outed to the parents. It's not until they have to change, not until they're ready to change their name, that the parents would be included in that conversation. It also does not have anything to do, there's no changes in anything with the policy that we're looking at tonight that would change how students coming out as gay or lesbian. There's nothing changing in that whatsoever. So with that, is there any questions from the board whatsoever? So with that, any questions?
I have a question. I'd like to ask Randy, have you talked to other school districts in our area, and how are they addressing this?
Sure, yes, I have. Just, I did several weeks ago for, just to see where they're at. I've talked with other school districts in Barron County and a couple of ones just outside Barron County. They do have, well, they said they don't have a written policy. They do bring parents in to have that kind of... They do bring parents in to have that conversation if a change is wanting to be made.
And then I guess I'd like to follow up with that. What do our lawyers and our liability insurance company say about this?
In checking with different attorneys, yes, they would, they would, they support moving to the parental notification piece. I talked to our liability insurance carrier last week after the last meeting, and he stated, while they can't tell us what to do, they would rather see us move in the direction of parental notification.
Thanks. So Randy, if this is implemented, or if this passes tonight, how would it be implemented?
I would say, and I talked with Kevin about this, I would say as a board, you can't expect that tomorrow morning. You know, everything is going to be perfect right off the bat. There would be parental notification and education on pieces. There would need to be staff notification, education about the process. What I would look at as we move into the near future, it would be a timeline of implementing this. And when we do have an in-service day, a staff in-service day coming up as well, where we could talk about it more. So I want to be clear with the board, if you implement the change, you know, it's not going to happen tomorrow morning. There are some pieces we need to work through.
Any other questions?
Kevin, this is Sarah. I apologize, I have a bit of a delay here. So, but I guess, I have a concern, in the past couple of weeks, we've gotten a lot of feedback as board members from both students and staff that they have a lot of questions, they have a lot of concerns, and they were, a lot of them are pressing just more time to have conversations with board members, with administration, to really feel like they understand what this means, because really, students and staff are going to be the ones who are the most directly affected by this. And I feel like we owe it to, especially our staff, to listen to them, to hear their concerns, to answer their questions, to make sure that they really, truly understand what this means for them and what will and won't change for them. I know a few of our staff members, or several of them, have been asking that we table this, and some of our students as well, just so those conversations can be had. I know we tried to do that in the last few weeks, but I'm getting away from people, and I know, you know, the staff listening sessions were set up with not a lot of advance notice, and so, if there's any way that we can table this vote and tell those people are able to have the discussions, and really understand what it is we're trying to do here.
Any other questions or comments?
If, if we find after discussions, if we vote to proceed, I mean, it's a policy, and policies can be amended and adapted if we find that there's something that, you know, through this, I don't think tabling it necessarily makes it go away. So, I think if we find that we proceed with it, and there's changes that we all agree that need to be made, it's just a policy, and we can make those changes at any time, that's what.
Yeah, I agree with that. There's been a lot of discussion about some of the difficult cases, and certainly we realize there are difficult cases, but we've discussed mechanisms to deal with those. I think that people of good faith on all sides can always come up with ways to fairly address the situation. An example I've used is the IEP, the Independent Educational Program, for students that are having difficulties academically. That requires the parents to come in, I believe, and participate with the staff and students, and I don't see why that couldn't be considered just as an example of a model. So like Steve said, there'll be things that have to be ironed out a little bit, but I think as Kevin said, it's most important that a policy begin from a position of honesty. To not start from that means that we can predict the future, and by doing something that we know may not be right, that will lead to a better outcome down the road. And since we can't predict the future, I think it's better just to stay with the next step that we know is right. Just one other thing I want to say, it hasn't been brought up, but I think sometimes the impression might be there with staff and students that the name change, the gender change is something to be taken lightly, that it's totally reversible, and I know that a lot of people disagree, but there is usually another side to things, and especially with an issue like this. I think to most reasonable people, you say there's got to be another side to things, and there are experts that maintain that affirming does not, and world-renowned experts, experts that have themselves started transgender clinics, themselves treated transgender people, themselves recommended hormones and surgeries for a few people, but still follow standard medical ethics and say that there has to be a standard evaluation, and this is not always the way. So, and they will also maintain it's a serious decision that, once it's taken, most often leads to hormones and surgery and becomes very life-changing. So, it is a major decision, we have put a lot of thought into it, it's not taken lightly, we're not making light of any of these students. But I think this is the right place to start for the right reasons, and we go from there.
I agree that tabling this doesn't make it go away, but when I think about, you know, our mission and our vision and what our role is as a school board, and really thinking about the kids and our staff as well, I feel like we owe it to the kids and the staff to at least feel like they've been heard and they understand what this means for them. And that is why I think it's really important that we table it out. I know nobody wants to drag this out, this isn't a fun process for anyone, obviously, but I think it's really important that we support our students and staff in feeling like they're valued and they're heard and they're understood and their questions have been answered.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to say, Sarah, I agree with you as far as there's a lot of emotion in this, there's a lot of concerns, different concerns, different viewpoints, and we certainly want to hear those and respect those, but I think the main thing that we have to remember is this really comes down to a legal risk for us. This is about parents' rights, and parents' rights have never lost in the courts, and now that we have studied this and realized the risks that we face, if we don't revise it now, that will put us in the position of being intentionally negligent to our taxpayers and putting them at risk of lawsuits, and I just don't think that's responsible.
Any other comments? Thoughts from the board? There has been some discussion to table that, is there a motion to move forward with a
I would make a motion to table this until our next meeting.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Motion has been made, is there a second to table this for two weeks? Seen no second, that motion will fall short, and with that, I'll bring it back to the Policies 347.2, Policy 411, Rule 1, Rule 2, Exhibit 1, Exhibit 2, and Exhibit 3. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve those policies, rules, and exhibits.
I move to approve those policies, rules, and exhibits.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, those policies, rules, and exhibits have been approved, and with that, we will move on to our information section. Communications Committee meeting minutes?
Communications Committee met on Tuesday, September 27th. We always start with reports from the middle school leadership team, high school leadership team, and elementary leadership teams, and talking about, they all talked about start of the year, and in-service days and plans moving forward, fast bridge assessments, those pieces. And then additional agenda items, we talked about communication pieces, so, ready to roll out the communication guidelines that we had worked on with the Donovan Group last spring. The Communication Intranet site is ready to go, be sharing that out in the next staff update, and just looked at our meetings for the remainder of the year, which are November, January, and May.
Any questions? All right, thank you for that update. Third Friday enrollment, September 16th numbers.
Yeah, so with that, as far as actual students in seats, basically the same as last year, a difference of one. You will notice, though, that our FTE count for the revenue limit is actually up by nine total students, and that was due to increases in summer school. And so, two years ago, basically, we had no summer school. Last year, better attendance and strong attendance for summer school this year, and that helped significantly.
All right. Any questions on third Friday enrollment numbers? Okay, the upcoming meeting schedule, we've got on Wednesday, October 12th, here in town, we have the WSB 2022 Fall Regional Meeting, that starts as a pre-regional meeting seminar that starts at 4:30, and then the regular meeting, regional meeting starts at 6:00. If you can attend that, please let Colleen know so she can get you registered for that. And then Public Participation at the Board Meetings Online Event for Wednesday, October 12th, at 12 noon, registration is required. If you can attend that online event, please let Colleen know so she can get you registered. And there's a Legal and Legislative Video Update on Wednesday, October 19th, at noon, no registration is required for that. And then we have on Tuesday, November 15th, over at Turtle Lake at CSU 11, the Fall Advis- Advocacy Workshop connecting with lawmakers. And then we have the Legal and Legislative Video Update, coming back to us again, November 16th, no registration required for that. And then finally, the WSB Education Convention down in Milwaukee on January 17th through the 20th. If you can attend any of those that need registration, please let Colleen know as soon as possible so she can get you signed up. With that, Mr. Drost, upcoming events for the district?
Lots of things always happening in the district. For those families with elementary children, we have family math and literacy nights coming up here in, next week and the coming weeks. There's free books, a light dinner. Parents would have been emailed, received an email at home, they need to, we prefer that they RSVP so we can, staff members can plan. But Tener and Hagen are having those next, or this week, on October 13th, and Hilltop is having theirs on October 27th. So Family Math and Literacy Night's always a great time. Reminder, Monday, October 17th, so a week from tonight, if you have elementary students in the district, that's an elementary-only in-service day, so no school for elementary students next, next Monday. As far as high school athletics, lots going on as they work to wrap up that fall season. Girls golf has been, has wrapped up their successful season. Tennis is coming to the end of their great season, had a doubles team qualify for the state tournament later this week. Volleyball, boys soccer, boys and girls cross-country football begin regional and/or sectional competitions next week, and girls swimming will, their season goes a little bit longer. They will be ending their regular season soon. Look on our Facebook page, if you need help with raking, I don't know a ton about it yet, I didn't have a chance to talk to Mr. Schradl, but October 23rd, I believe that's a Sunday, Rice Lake High School Student Council is doing a rake and run, and so if you need some help raking your yard, reach out, check our Facebook page out, there's a signup form there. And then October 27th, an event that's always seen a ton of support in the community, the Empty Bowls fundraiser. So it's going to be right here in the Rice Lake High School cafeteria, beginning at 4:30. A number of people in the community make bowls for that event, a number of businesses donate soup for the night, and dozens of people help out with the planning for that, and I know Miriam and Steve are big parts of that, help out with the planning for that and the follow-through, and carrying out a great event that raises, that's the main fundraiser for the backpack program for the year. So, coming up October 27th.
All right. Thank you for that. Any questions? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.